All right, I'd like to call this council meeting on December 11th to order at 7:01. Before we do roll call, I'll let you know that I got a resignation to the council from Janice this afternoon. So she's not going to be here was effective immediately, so it's us.
Good timing, right?
He might be beating out and lock the door quickly.
The camera's there, right?
Timing knows everything. So I guess with that in mind for roll call, all active members of the council are present. Recognized visitors.
Steve Marsham with TD&amp;H Engineering.
Nice to see you, Steve.
And Creighton Osbridge representing the Harrington Lions Club.
All right, thank you. Let's say pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Paul Thomas. Oh, well, thank you. First of all, this is kind of one of my favorite council meetings to go to because I bring a gift. Just to thank you guys.
I thought you meant us.
Yes.
Not just December's. I'm glad you're laughing. It didn't deliver quite like.
No, it took me a second. No, it's not your fault, Steve, but it's mine because the wheel's turning a little slower.
As long as the hamster's not yet.
Yeah, he's on three legs, not four, but it's one of my favorite ones to come to because I get to come around to the clients and like you folks and say thank you for being a client of ours. There's a little bit of news. You may hear my role at the firm changing here as of the first. However, I don't believe it's going to really try not to have an effect because I'm your guys' point of contact for all your engineering needs, specific, well, your water and road needs. I'm not anticipating it to change, but I thought I would let you know that you'll probably see something coming up.
Okay, good, thank you. I hope that's a congratulations.
It is.
Okay, good.
I think it is. We'll find out if it is.
All right.
But thank you guys very much. Appreciate working with you guys.
Got a lot going on, so.
Yes, you guys have a ton of going on.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, thank you.
Creighton, in the interest of time?
Okay, the reason I'm here is I'll give you, to replace the cemetery building. I'll give you a little history first for if you don't know. In 2000, the fall of 2015, the Harrington homemakers came up with the idea with a little prodding of my wife that they would sell flags to put up at the cemetery for, originally it was just Memorial Day. And so at the Fall Festival, they sold about 66 flags. Then they decided they needed somehow to put them up, so the Harrington Lions Club came up with the labor, which was mostly me, and then the labor to put the holes in the ground up at the cemetery. And so the spring of 2016, we dug the holes, poured the cement, and Memorial Day of 2016 was the first time that they were up. And they've been up five times a year, every year since then. They go up on Memorial Day, Flag Day, Fourth of July, Fall Festival, and Veterans Day. So the reason that we'd like to tear down the building, replace the building up there is since then, during the summer, they've been stored in my shop on a trailer. And particularly now that I'm not farming, I want the shop for my toys. So therefore, and then in the wintertime, they're down in the basement of the library. And that's a pain to get them down there because they gotta go down individually. So it takes about six people to put them down there or get them back out. Anyway, I went and got some kind of estimates on what a shed or a garage would cost up there. And the cheapest one I came up with was $7,000 from Tough Shed. And that's a 10 by 20, which is the minimum probably that we could go. But that's with barn doors, so they'd open on hinges. Does have a floor in it, and that's the biggest thing that we're looking for is a floor of some kind in it so that the mice don't get in and chew up the flags. Then Tough Shed makes a garage that's 12 by 20 with no floor in it. You'd have to pour your own slab, and that was $19,000, which was a little.
That's before the slab?
That's before the slab. And so that 12 by 20 slab or probably more than that would be at least another couple grand at least. So then I went to Hickory Sheds and the Methodist Church, we got a Hickory Shed down there for storage, and it's more than adequate. It has a floor in it and stuff. And they make actually a garage that has 12-inch on center, two by sixes with a 3/4-inch floor in it that they claim you could drive a pickup on top of, which would be fine. It has an actual garage door, a man door, and one window. And that, the bid was 14-something. They have a couple on sale right now, wrong colors, that are 12 by 32 that are, seems like $11,000. So anyway, funding-wise, I'm sure you guys just want to part with your money as much as anybody else, but the Braun Miller Foundation, which is in memorial for a couple people that lived here for years, is willing to come up with most of the money for this. The Lions Club is willing to put skin in the game, at least a couple thousand, maybe more. I think we got enough money that we could put at least three grand in. The homemakers are thinking they could put a thousand in. And when I talked to Joe, you said something that you might, the city might put some money in. We're not looking for anything big at this point.
We had, we built some, some had necessarily earmarked for anything, but some had been already built into. I'm not going to look around. Been built into the budget for 2025.
There would be room for you to put, the only thing that the city uses that building for right now is for the sprinkler control, and that takes up a little thing in there. We'd be more than enough room to put that in there. Plus, that would give us power. We could put one bare light bulb up if we wanted to. Go ahead.
My question, you're talking about putting it in the same footprint?
Yep, tearing that one down, which if you've looked at it, it's, yeah, it's not good.
My only concern with that, looking at it a couple of years ago, is the doors on the north side. Driving over the graves and stuff.
We could click the doors going right in the.
Do you think that's the best, that was my concern, is kind of locking it in if we find another spot for it?
Well, we could find another spot for it, but if we could, that driveway goes right up to it. So if we put the door on the west side, it would work that way.
But at the same token, is that taking up valuable plot space?
No, not now. It's never going to. I wouldn't think if you're going right up that driveway, there's no plots there to be sold anyway.
Yeah, I can't remember how big that is. It's up there right now. It's at least.
But it's turned the other direction. So actually, you should be able, if you ran it east and west, the 20 going east and west, you'd end up with more space than what's up there right now.
Right, and right now that shed is how big?
I didn't measure it, but.
I haven't.
I can't remember.
I'm guessing it's at least 30 feet long and probably about 12 wide, 15 wide in that neighborhood. The only thing that we need to do, that would need to be done is, after you tear it down, is have something level, probably a load of gravel, and maybe even come back to get it off that have it some drainage up there. And they bring it in and just drop it down.
So who's going to spearhead up where it goes and how, I mean?
We would tear it down too.
Isn't the biggest open question on our side what we are wanting to store equipment-wise?
Yeah, that was why if we were going to do something else up there, we should anticipate, it was my opinion, anticipate that we're having equipment that's stored in that space also. Which, what's the size of a riding lawnmower, you know, as far as the footprint is concerned?
What was the sidewall height? Can you remember?
I think they're 7'6". Do you want my opinion on storing the equipment up there? I can give you that too. I think anytime you're going to, if you guys are really going to mow the lawn, they're going to need to be down at the city shop for maintenance, check the oil, fill with gas. You're not going to want all gas up there. It makes no sense to me to store, and just for security reasons, no sense to me to store equipment at the cemetery.
Well, there was a point with that because it wouldn't be just used there. If the city took that back over, what's going to be there, it's going to be at the city park, it's going to be at the north end of town, it's going to be everywhere, so.
And what do they use for grave digging, wheelbarrows, whatever, sprinklers, all that? That's what I kind of.
Well, they're just going up there with buckets for an urn, and then they have the backhoe that goes up there for a grave.
Right now, they don't store sprinklers up there. As far as sprinkler repair, I would think that would be down at the city shop.
Yeah, all the supplies are down at the shop. Yeah, the only thing that I know of that's in there right now, and I've only peeked in there once over a year ago, was a bunch of old picnic tables.
It should be disposed of too.
Yes, they should probably go with the building. Or at least be offered up for sale. It can be rebuilt if somebody is so inclined. Anyway.
I think the biggest fork in the road is we should go down the line here and see if we want to store equipment there because if the answer is no, and there are some counterarguments, then I think that clears the path to what size, and then we can talk about how much we'd put in on it. If the answer is yes, we do want to still store equipment there, then we've got larger discussions to have to have about how big do we need to go and who funds what side of it. I'll start, I guess, by saying I don't, I agree that it seems like even if you stored it up there, you'd have the things down at the shop, a fair amount. I think getting the fire truck out and clearing space in some of our locations down here probably does more for equipment storage than something up there. And then if you wanted to work on it during the winter or something, it's behind snow and mud and all sorts of stuff. So I guess I'd say no, I don't feel like we'd need to store anything up there much. What do you think, David?
I'm going to have to give it more time to think about. Do we need an answer tonight on this?
No, we don't need an answer, but I prefer to have an answer by.
Tomorrow?
April, no, February. I mean, to give us a chance to tear it down, get it ordered, because I'm not going to guarantee that these prices that I have right now, it'd really be nice if I could just go up and get one of those ones. They're about a third off right now.
And repaint it?
And repaint it. They're the wrong, this would be white with a green roof that'd match every other cemetery building in the county.
And these are located where?
It's Hickory Sheds. They build them all over the.
I mean, so Spokane, we take Hickory on the website?
They're postfalls, they're down in Moses Lake, they're down Ritzville. They have an outfit builds them and then they home, the one down to church was down at Ritzville. They have a trailer pulled by a pickup. They push it off and.
Tough sheds?
Tough sheds are a lot more expensive.
But they're.
I wouldn't guarantee they're built any better because I looked at the both and I can't tell the difference.
On the website or in person?
I've looked at all of them in person, and there's no difference between them.
Well, I have, and that's why I'm asking the questions.
Yeah.
Okay?
I looked at them in person. Home Depot sells tough sheds.
Home Depot.
And I went right to Tough Shed and got a bid.
Or you could do, save some money and order it completely unassembled like I did.
Well, see, there's been, there's been some talk about that, that we could build a pole shed cheaper. Probably not easier. This would be the ease, you pay something for the labor of doing it. And I guess the club is willing, and the Braun Foundation is willing to pay for the ease of doing it.
What is the, what is your expected size for the shed if we're not storing equipment?
12 by 20.
12 by 20, okay. What does that do to the city's insurance? A $20,000 building, probably very, very negligible from a property.
Is the current building insured?
It's on the list, yeah. It's on the asset list. So we'd just be replacing that.
Does there any gain from getting something that's not about to fall over on someone? I mean, do they take condition? No, I'm serious. Like, if I was insuring that building, I wouldn't want to insure the one up there. I would want to insure the new one.
The end of writing from AWC is incredibly liberal, so to say. So they probably have no clue what the condition is.
Okay.
They want to know what it's made out of, how big it is, and after that, they, and I'm prob, the age, I'm sure. It's probably, if it burnt down, we'd get the value of the wood that got destroyed. That's it.
And this is T111 siding painted and metal rough. No insulation.
Chris or Gavin, do you guys have thoughts about equipment?
My only concern, from my perspective, would be who's going to redo the sprinkler system components so that they're actually inside the shed. Is the control box outside of the shed now?
No, it's inside.
It is inside? Oh, okay. Yeah, so you're going to have to put a hole in the floor, run new piping, run all the controls up through the bottom of the floor.
Well, it's just wires. It's not pipes. There might be conduit going in there, but it's, it's just wires. There's 110 to it and then.
The manifold's not in there, just the control.
The manifold's scattered out.
Yeah, power.
Yeah, who's going to handle dealing with the power? Who's, is that all part of what you're expecting to pay for on the replacement?
Yeah.
So there would be like Kaiser Electrical or someone would have to, because there's a Vista service, I'm assuming.
But right now, well.
Because it would have to be inspected if it gets replaced.
Probably.
Yeah, we do, I don't know where the meter is, but we do have an invista built for the cemetery.
Yeah, I don't know.
Can't be much, though.
No, it's not much. It's 20, 30 bucks a month.
And most of that's just for the hookup, probably.
Yeah, yeah, I think during the summer it goes up because of the sprinkler usage and it's being driven a little bit harder.
Because that's, okay, speaking of which, those flags, should they be lit at night if we have power up there?
I don't.
We have talked about that. That is just almost impossible to do. With 66 flags, the whole length of the cemetery would be almost impossible.
They make those solar tops.
Well, if you guys want to buy them, we'll put them on, but.
Yeah, the solar top on the flag at the place over here doesn't turn on half the time.
Yeah, you'd need something that was actually a spot with a solar panel and the batteries that, you know, just turns on automatically at dusk.
I have no concerns, other than making sure whatever is done with the electrical is actually inspected and everything. Yeah, I feel like, you know, if we're not going to store equipment up there, 12 by 20 is the minimum you said?
That's for the flags, yeah.
Yeah, I mean. Is that so they stay on the trailer or?
Yep, we'll just back the trailer in.
Easy peasy.
Yeah, I actually can hook it up to the golf course. We can run right down the poles and one of us can do it in about 10 minutes. Right now, doing it from the back of the trailer and up each alley, it takes Beth and I about 20 minutes either to put them up or take them down. If we have more help, it just goes out much faster. But if we never had to take them back into that library, I would be so excited.
Who's trailer?
It was a gift to the Lions Club. It's not licensed. It's not bonded.
How tall are those legs from tip to?
They're 10-foot conduit, and they go in the ground about 16 inches.
So that would be my only concern, is that's not a city asset sitting in that building. We would need some kind of a waiver.
That's fine.
Relinquishing any responsibility for that trailer while it's stored in there.
That's fine. The trailer isn't worth anything.
Yeah, just a general waiver.
This gets into things like the charity at the Memorial Hall, but whose flags are those?
I would say that they're the homemakers because they sold them. But there's names on every flag, so it's probably, you could say that people bought them.
Okay, well, so.
There's names on all 66 of them.
Personally, I would say that they bought sponsorship of those flags and that the homemakers should give a waiver for the flags as well as the trailer.
Probably, if that's what you want.
It's easier to figure it out when everyone likes each other.
I'll speak for myself, say I have no problems with this. I think, I think we should at least cover, I mean, what do you think, the electrical service? I'm guessing to move an electrical service and a new panel, a couple grand?
I wouldn't bet that there's even a panel there. As I remember, but it's been a couple of years since I looked in there, it was just plugged into an outlet. And the panel thing is clear, goes over to the front side where it comes off. It has to come, go underneath the highway because I don't think there's wires in the air there.
No, there's not.
And then there's a box where all the, something to do with the sprinkler system. And then I think there's just probably a 110 going over, I wouldn't even bet it's on conduit, but 110 buried going over to that building to house the controller. And then wires, probably 12 volt wires going all over from there.
I'd say we should pick an amount, and if there's an electrical, if there's AC that needs to be moved and inspected, we should pay for that within the amount, and then the rest of it will just. we should pay for that within the amount and then the rest of it will just donate. So like just to pick a number out of thin air, for example, if we say we're gonna kick in three grand, if there's any electrical that has an electrician fee from it, we cover all of that. And then whatever's remainder from that, we'll just donate. It's my thought to keep it clean. And then if there is no electrical because the panel is somewhere else, if it gets, if it's cheaper than that, then it's still our same net contribution. Does that
Well, that sounds good to me.
Reasonable?
I did leave it as an action item if there was a potential of you guys wanting to do something tonight.
Yeah, I'm not expecting you to do anything tonight. But I would
David, how comf, I mean, I don't think we need to force a vote if you're really uncomfortable. I know you said you want to think on it more, but I think you want to
Think about it.
Okay.
Well, that, that does also give us some time to look there and work, work in order and where is the electrical system? Where is, is there
Yeah, I can't, I can't remember.
Trying to think wherever the meter is.
The meter's out. It's out on the highway. There's a meter box that comes up.
The pedestal there?
It's a pedestal box. It's the kind where it's got the meter in the top and you flip it open and there's breakers underneath the meter.
Okay. Well, if that's the case.
There's gotta be a breaker that goes over to the
Yeah, there's probably a single breaker that runs all the way over there. There's probably a single breaker that runs.
Where it even comes from, was it up the road or across the road underneath?
Pretty sure it comes across the road. But I'm not even sure, because we were, one time we were up there working. Maybe it's when we were punching the hole. So where is the electrical for this and?
It's, it's one of those things you don't normally see in a cemetery. You worry about utilities because people burying there. It's a
Yeah.
They're not using it, so.
Well, you know, a lot of cemeteries will have lighting on a monument or a
They can.
Yeah, various things.
But Harrington, other than people putting up those solar powered lights and stuff like that. We'll find out.
So we think we can bring this to a vote first meeting in January?
Yeah, and I would encourage.
Is that our next meeting?
Maybe, yeah. It's, well, unless something happens, we need to do it on the eighteenth, but the two Wednesdays after that are holidays.
Let's make it our, our next meeting whenever we're gonna have it.
If, if we don't meet on the eighteenth of December, it's gonna be January eighth is if, is the next schedule. And during that time, um, we can you guys can get in touch with me and we can go up there and open up the, open up the place and I am not working and I don't plan on being anywhere between New Year's and Christmas, Christmas and New Year's. So I'll be here. All right, so table it until the eighth?
Okay. Do you want me here for the eighth?
Up to you, I think.
Steve is a member of Lions Club, so he can
If something new comes up.
Or you can let me know or I might show up. But I really don't want that other chair.
Well, we'll, we'll have an open
You better call in.
We'll have an open appointment spot for a chair at the table.
Yeah. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Gray.
Thanks, Gray. Officer Martin.
How's it going?
Going well. Here for your
The report?
The report, yep. Awesome. Thank you.
So between eleven one and eleven thirty, we had seven calls in Harrington, uh, an alarm, uh, deceased, uh, lost and found property, suspicious person or circumstance, a traffic offense and a welfare check.
And that was for what timeframe?
Uh, eleven one to eleven thirty.
November.
A lot of places, that's, all, all that would happen in one day.
What, west of the mountain?
You're right, one hour.
West of the mountains, like thirty minutes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Awesome. Everything's in Electric City.
Fantastic.
Good. Okay, uh, additions to the agenda.
I was just gonna touch bases on the, the rent here. And, um, what we're paying for mileage to the bank for deposits. There's something else and I can't remember, so forget it. I'm good. Those are just two things.
Well, you can just
Yeah.
Zip me a note or an email and I'll get that information to you.
And, uh, as promised, I'll just, we'll put it in this way. Requesting mayor's updates that we give an update on weeds.
On weeds?
Yeah, it doesn't need its own, eh, just, if you would just touch on that, mayor update.
Okay. There's any gun?
I have nothing.
Chris?
No.
Okay. Okay, um, so I've mentioned this to some of you, maybe all of you at some point. Our public works person Lance, uh, was not eligible to use his earned vacation until this month. It creates a little bit of awkwardness for him to take off in December because of the other public works persons having to take time off one or two days a week because he's gotta do some family stuff that's scheduled. Um, as it turns out, uh, Lance is expecting in January. Not him personally.
Oh, baby, okay. I, I, I thought expecting to do something, yeah, okay.
So, so they're, they're having a child.
Well, congratulations, Lance.
So the, what I'm asking, and this is a council decision, it's not mine, is I'm asking if we can extend the the vacation hours that he would normally have had to use in December, in December only before this term of the new year, into the first quarter of twenty twenty-five, just that long, so he can use them most likely as vacation when his child's born.
Has, has, uh, how much time is it looking at?
He would only have the first drop, which
Pro rated.
Pro ra, yeah, he'd have the first six months. That, that it's pro rated.
Roughly.
Yeah.
Move to approve.
Why would he take vacation when the family leave act gives him time off?
Um, because it doesn't necessarily pay him. Or not, not his full wage.
Although, okay, we're talking, so how many hours? Oh, look at this.
It's probably a week, week and a half.
Forty, forty hours?
Yeah, because we're given, I think, ninety-six a year, if I remember correctly.
In the first year, yes. Yeah, because there is, there's, there's a scale in the handbook, but it, it goes up progressively as the longer you've been tenured.
Years, yeah. So he hasn't taken any vacation at all this year?
No.
Because eligibility?
He's taken time off. He's had some sick time, but he hasn't taken any vacation.
I'll second the approval.
Okay, thank you. Okay, discussion.
I need some more figures here. So he would want to roll over more than twenty hours?
Whatever he's got in the bank right now. I can prob, I think I have that number on my computer if you guys are okay with me going and looking at it.
Sure.
Has he put in for it and denied?
No, he hasn't put in anything. It just, it was a conversation with me.
The only problem I have with that is precedence and I, I get it. He's, um, where I come from that. Stand on that. If he had put in for vacation and you denied it because the need, necessity, out of necessity, I'd still like to see some paperwork going along with that. Him put in for the last week, whatever. And deny it and the reason for is because other public works. Otherwise, it's given, I see parental, preferential treatment in a form here, starting. I mean, that's all great, but that's just taking that's rolling over his vacation completely into the next year.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying what he has right now.
Well, that, that is.
When did he become eligible to take it?
Not until December. So they have to work for six months before they can take any vacation that they've accrued.
Then I would suggest a correction to the handbook.
Okay.
You and I gotta go that.
Yeah, that needs to be corrected in the handbook, which is why I moved to approve. If you're hired three days before the six month of the, beginning of the year, then you have three days to take vacation at the end of the year.
If you were hired on July third.
Yeah, you'd be you'd accrue vacation and instantly lose it. That's wrong. If it, if you're hired in the first six months of the year, you're el, you're your vac, occurred vacation should be extended by at least six months for the first year.
That's number one problem right there. We're not getting accrued vacation. We're giving it out preloaded or ahead of time.
It's preloaded, yeah.
So if you accrue it, you don't run into that problem.
Right, but if you preload it.
Yeah, you're screwed.
You're screwed, so.
Sorry. But that's, I mean, that's the way it is.
Yeah.
And here, I don't, you know, I, I'll say
I don't, I don't see it as preferential treatment. I see it as making it correct. So.
We talked about, I know you guys weren't here. Stephen and I and Nathan were going over this and we we talked about to avoid a situation like we had before prior. But the max, a lot of companies only allow you, if you're denied, to carry over so much. And I think we come, I don't know, I haven't re, um, gone back and looked at the notes, but I think it was like twenty hours, up to twenty hours carryover, if you're denied. So we're talking would the clerk or somebody be able to tell us how many hours is on the, he's looking at?
Let me see if I can find it.
Cause I guarantee whatever we're doing right now is setting precedents for future.
Yeah, I would suggest a correction to the handbook that if you're hired.
And I just want to make it right for everybody.
For your first year, because you're given it at the beginning of the year, correct?
Beginning and then
It's in two chunks.
Two chunks, two allotments.
Yeah. I would propose a correction to the handbook.
And how does the law work now where, uh, men get paternity leave?
Yeah.
Do you get paid for that?
Yes, you do. It's part of the family leave act.
Okay, but it's, I think at a reduced rate and for, it's not, it's not full salary during that. And there's a time limit that's
There's only a certain amount of time that's for six weeks. And then the remaining six weeks of that twelve week, if that's M L A, is unpaid, but it protects your job for when you
Right.
Same position, yeah.
You also aren't paying it to retirement at that time.
You do what?
You're not paying it to retirement at that time.
Okay. Or labor and industry.
As of the last paycheck, you guys, a hundred and twelve hours accrued of vacation. I think it's been longer than six months. And he's
Hundred
That's fourteen days.
Yeah, but earlier we mentioned that it is ninety-six in the first year, unless we remember it wrong. Let me pull up the handbook here.
Well, fifty-two weeks and
I found it amounted to eight hours a month is what ran in my back of my head.
I'm pulling it up.
Well, it should be. Should be like ninety-six.
I'm just going with what
And he's been here how long? What is he?
I'm guessing the environment's currently set up to accrue on overtime. Which is why it's exceeding what you're expecting.
Well, it, if it is, that wouldn't be in accordance with the handbook.
Forty-eight. Okay. What am I looking at here?
Okay, he was hired on April twenty-third.
All right, so for zero to sixty months, it's eight hours per month.
Right. And he's
So he's been here for how many months?
Since April, it, well, May. So so
So eight months?
Seven.
Eight, seven.
So seven times eight should be fifty-six.
Okay, I will have to have a conversation with our payroll people.
Yeah, I'm guessing it's accruing on O T.
That, you said a hundred and twelve?
That's where it shows up.
That's perfectly double.
Yeah.
That would be the accrual rate of someone who's been here for two hundred and forty-one months or more. That is, that is our max. Yeah, that is somehow very much incorrect.
That's
Are you looking at the
That's getting corrected.
The policy book, yeah.
Yeah.
Does it, did we put anything in there? Do you remember that conversation, how much to carry over?
Well, there's no carryover without council approval.
Right, but we had talked about a figure though.
Uh, there might
I don't see it in there.
A cap, you mean?
A cap, how much you carry. But it had to be denied. See, this, this is right. I mean, we run into this. He wasn't allowed to take it and then shazam, here we go. Let's take it. But
Uh, subsection four, vacation leave received by any, received in any one, one calendar year must be used in the calendar year received, i.e. received vacation leave does not carry over from one year to the next. If at the end of the calendar year, an employee has unused and received vacation leave, they shall not be compensated for said unused vacation leave. Council may authorize all or part of the unused vacation time to be carried over to the next year if in its sole discretion, the council determines that the employee was unable to use said vacation time due to the needs of the city.
Right.
So I don't see a cap there unless there's another section, but I would hope such a restriction wouldn't be talked about in a separate section.
So if he should realistically have fifty-two hours?
Six.
Or fifty-six hours? If he hasn't taken any.
But
Cause he wasn't eligible yet?
Is he, is, throw another does he get, did he, when he started in April, did he automatically get loaded with vacation?
It's
It should be pro rated.
It's pro rated. And I and then I think I think the proration until June or until the end of June is put in there.
Subsection two, new employees do not receive vacation time hours until the next occurring leave accrual date. The amount of the vacation time accrued on an employee's first accrual date shall be on a prorata basis based on the number of days said employee was employed prior to the said accrual date. So I interpret that to mean that if he started in April, he received no vac, he received no vacation until July, at which time he would have received the prorated April to July. Cause he couldn't have used it because he wouldn't have been eligible anyway. And then in July, he would have received the second half of the year dump.
That's the way I read it too.
Yeah. Which he was still mostly ineligible for. Which he was still mostly ineligible for. And I think Chris brought up an excellent point. I don't think we ever really talked about how that sets a person up if they start in the latter part of the second quarter.
Well, I think the handbook gives an opening to correct the situation because we can approve.
Right.
Yes, he's allowed to carry that over.
And that was.
Into the first half of next year only.
And that's part of, I mean, when we had the discussions with Nathan and stuff, that's part of why we put it there because that council can approve was the kind of, and, and I respect your concern, David, I do, about the, the favoritism.
Yeah.
I, I, I get it because whenever the council is making a decision, it could have not made that decision and then people say, oh, they don't like me. And so I, I get it. And I think there was an argument for why we put it in this way. I mainly just don't wanna see the bunny stuff, that whole situation happen again. There are other ways of doing it. I think the tide is moving out that the handbook will. I, I think the votes are there probably to move away from this. I, and so precedence is likely to reflect a future state in the next year, not under this. And council approval was the, was the, the relief valve to make sure we didn't do something stupid, so.
Well, I think right now we'd be hindering the employee from using a benefit that was given to him simply because we have constraints against that employee. So I see no reason not to extend it by vote for at least 90 days in the next year. If he doesn't use it by the 90 day mark, then he loses it.
Sure.
Well, you understand January 1st, 2nd, he gets another 56.
Which is perfectly fine.
Uh, 20, 23. Cause it would be less than, it, it's at eight hours a month. So six, six times eight.
Forty-eight.
Instead of seven times eight, so 48, yeah. But that is, that is, that is a good point in that he will get, and that was one of the, that was one of the benefits of that type of a situation is to, he will have the benefit of something he hasn't yet accrued. It, it, there were, there were some things about it that I think were nice for employees, but I still am in favor of doing it.
Well, you've got a motion and a second.
The whole, the whole thing?
They were having the whole conversation. The whole thing?
Everything he has is how many hours?
Well, everything he should, I'm, I'm not moving.
Everything he should have.
I'm only moving the amount that's in compliance with the handbook rate.
I would agree, yes. Yeah. I, I've already got a note here to find out why that looks different.
No reason why.
Tell, you know, set it at, what did you guys say, 56?
56. I'll, I'll amend my motion to say it's 56.
Allow the carryover of 56 hours for the first 90 days of next year.
Why the first 90?
Okay, do we have a second on the amendment?
I move it, so I can't second it.
I'll second.
Okay.
Now, this will come back to bite us some way or another. But.
So.
I'll reluctantly go with this, that amount, but if we go through the damn handbook and get that S O B done.
Tell me when you wanna put on the agenda.
You and I need to schedule some time to do that, so let's.
Cause I hate these type of situations and that's what our handbook is for, to avoid this.
Well, I'm glad there's a relief valve in the current handbook, but.
It was merely a step forward for a time period where we arguably didn't have a handbook.
It was fitting for the time.
And we knew when we passed it. We said in that meeting before we passed it, this handbook is inadequate. It's just, we ran out of grant money, we ran out of time. We needed to pass what we had at the time.
Correct.
And it needs, and it needed, it's always needed to get approved.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 No opposed. Thank you. Sherland says thank you and his family says thank you. All right, um, next on the agenda, did you guys see the paperwork for the T I B grant?
Uh, okay, I seen some of it.
Yes, I, I did.
This is the cover of this, I haven't seen it. I mentioned it during the budget deal. We have been awarded, um, a 100% grant for $394,000 and change to replace on the east side of town, so the east side of the tracks, the ramps on the sidewalk to make them into ADA compliant. There are some up there, they're not the right size for them, whatever, some don't exist. So this is basically to get that side of town, the sidewalks ADA compliant with the, with the ramps.
Did they figure this, Mr. Mayor, did they figure this, spending $394,800 for those ramps?
Yeah, they'd be removing the existing.
You're gonna be kidding me?
Nope. No, they're estimating, rough estimates are about $4,000 apiece to put in or to replace.
Um, how, how many exactly? Nobody knows exactly then where they're going.
Not exact, the, the final markup will include that. I just know they're on the east side. I mean, I, I went up there and looked at, took pictures of a number of the ones around the park and a number of them around the school. Um, but there are other places where we have corners that the sidewalk just ends abruptly. No ramp, there's no curbing, it's just solid edge.
Is any of it on school property?
That's, it's, it's the city sidewalk.
So what's the discussion points for this?
Well, basically I've got a contract that I'm being asked to sign to agree to accept the grant and to move forward with it. Um, that's, so that's what I'm looking for your approval on.
So this is just to accept the money? And then we go through bid?
Yes, there's a, there's the whole bid process, engineering process, everything else that happens after this.
Who's managing the grant?
The city is managing it. It's coming from the transportation and, uh, transportation improvement board.
So all the funds control, all that stuff is being handled by the city?
Yeah, they, I mean, they don't just drop that money and notice we have to.
Right, submit invoices and all that stuff. No, I totally get that. I just wanted to make sure that I understood who's managing that.
Yeah, yeah. It's the city that's in control of giving them updates, invoicing them. There's a whole process that's involved to get that done. So this is, this is basically going to be, you could, we would see an invoice come in on the claims and it's pass through money. You know, we get invoiced, we get paid back, so.
All of it?
It's a hundred percent grant.
No strings attached.
And that's protected against rate increases and no matter what the bid comes back at and all that kinda good stuff?
Well, this is the award, so we're gonna have to work within the award or less. It's not gonna do the entire city. Apparently it would take much more than $394,000.
I get it, but I'm just saying I'm not, I don't wanna get into this and say, well, we didn't think the bid was gonna come back that high. We're only covering 80% of it or something like that.
Well.
What is the compliance criteria for the grant itself?
Okay.
Do we need to upgrade a certain number? Is there?
Okay, purpose, the scope. It does not give a specific number.
Who applied for the grant?
It was done through T D and H. And they, they basically, when we were doing our, our street improvement plan, they were, T I B and T D and H were talking about what we were trying to do and then the information came out that we had to replace all our piping in the city. And they're like, well, we're not giving you any money for that. We're not gonna let you repave the roads when we're probably gonna be tearing them up within five years and.
The next day.
I would ask the engineers to specify what they expect to be replaced. T D and H actually gave us a listing of where they expect and what they put into the grant for replacement. And then I'd like to know exactly who's gonna be managing the grant.
Okay, well, that's, I can tell you, that's, this office manages the grant.
Right, but is it you? Is it the clerk?
It's the clerk treasurer.
Okay.
I mean, this is, this is usable up for 10 years in terms of the grant is, shall be effective until terminated, but shall not exceed 10 years unless amended by parties. So it's a 10 year.
So basically, we have 10 years to complete the work?
Yeah, I'm just going through the rest of it here. I believe I sent this out to you guys, but.
Yeah, I don't think I have a copy of that.
Failed to comply with the terms and conditions of the agreement would be a reason for default. Something that was not in compliance.
Unless it's amended by part, by the parties.
Yeah. Which means we would have to be giving them updates. You know, there's, there's a part of support that has to be done.
You know, and this is just for the ADA stuff?
Yeah, I mean, a certain amount of sidewalk on either side of them, so.
But, well, one of the things that comes to mind here, a few years ago, the Nazarene preacher, uh, Mr. Clark, was concerned that that sidewalk around there needed, was in desperate.
So since this is specifically the other side of the tracks, cause this specifically says the east side of town.
So you're getting a new ramp up to your house?
I mean, that's primarily why we're doing this. I don't even have sidewalks on my side of the street, so, which I'm, I'm thrilled about, honestly.
See, for example, I think you have one on the corner at your place, but I don't think it's wide enough.
I don't have any sidewalks on my side of the street.
Okay.
He's got black top. That's better.
That's why I bought the house.
No solicitors.
So this isn't committing us to.
That seems like an awful lot of money just for a few ADA. I just can't believe it. So some of it has to be eaten up in engineering or something.
I, I'm assuming there, yeah, there'd have to be some engineering involved in that.
When does this need to be signed by?
I have to look. I mean, it doesn't have to be signed tonight. I think I've got a couple months even to look at it. I do know that money is drying up at the state and we're hearing of other departments. It's like, man, if you don't get this project finished, they're pulling the money back.
Strictly fair. That's too bad it wasn't for more.
Yeah, I would ask T D and H to actually give us a scope of what they submitted for this, to know exactly how many corners.
Right.
What they included in their estimate to come up with that dollar amount.
It just, it doesn't, their agreement is for ADA ramp replacement. I know we had.
Yeah, and to point this out, this, this is our agreement with the T I B. This, this is not committing us to any specific engineer or any specific amount. It's just.
Oh, no, I get that. I'm just saying, whatever they submitted, I'd like to know what they submitted for justification for that dollar amount. So we have a general understanding of how much or what and where they included in the process for replacement.
I know a lot of sidewalks up at a school. That sounds like, I could be wrong, but, but, um, the park, we took out a sidewalk because of the trees. Is it, I don't see this.
Sidewalks necessarily. It's just the corner ramps and probably the five feet on either side would get updated because it'd get damaged when the old one was taken out or when they were doing whatever. So it's basically the apron up to the ramp and the ramp itself.
That's one question.
So usually they take out the gutters, they take out the, take out the gutters, take out a portion of the road.
And you say up at your house have ADA ramp there?
I've got the, yeah, nice yellow rubber raised bumps.
Yeah, okay.
And everything.
So that one probably isn't compliant, but that's, even the ones around the school, they don't have all the color. They're not as wide, they don't have.
Yeah, up at his place, that's part of that road project that we get a grant for. That's all up to code.
Yeah.
So it's just bringing all the rest of them up to that same code.
Or, or adding them where they should be.
Or putting them where they should be. That's my only concern is where are they talking about putting them?
A long time too. I mean.
The school.
Ten years at least.
Yes, I mean, the school has a ramp that's, that has no bumps on it at all.
But it's all level.
Well, you also have the, that first street down from the entrance to the school. Technically, there's a crosswalk right there. There's a sidewalk there. That one's not. You would have one at the opposite side of that. So it'd be ADA compliant going across that side, over by the, by the field entrance and that little shed.
Oh, yeah.
So like, just trying to understand the scope.
Yeah, well, I'll get that for you.
Yeah, well. And what you need is authorization to follow up on this or something?
I can follow up. Like I said, we, we can push this out till January before we get approval. I just was looking as I could. Hundred percent free.
Are you looking for approval to accept the grant?
Yes. Not, not anything more than that.
I'll put in a motion for accepting the grant.
And I'll second it.
First and a second to accept the grant. Any further discussion?
I'm kinda with Chris here. Figure out what, what's the scope or how they come up with this? Or they just threw darts at a board and said, okay, a map and you guys need it.
No, and I know what was done because, uh, middle of fall, when this was developing, Steve Marsh came to the city and literally was measuring every single one and was out there with a level to make sure that what slope was correct and what wasn't. And he, so he came out here and did, did a site survey of everything.
I said we have, just off the cuff, I'd say we have more of an issue downtown Harrington than we do up there. But I, that wasn't in the process.
Okay, um, any further discussion?
So I'm, sorry, I'm still stuck on this, but so it says T I B is awarding 100% of approved eligible project costs. Am I missing a definition of what approved and eligible is?
No, it's, it's anything that has to do with the.
Uh, I think I gave this to you guys a little bit. That's, that's the actual rule they're asking us. T I B is asking us to sign.
Do you, do you have that on?
I thought I had sent it out to you guys.
Maybe you have an unmissed.
It's under some doc, some council document. Yeah, it went out on, it went out to you guys on Sunday.
The award letter? Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Starts out, okay.
No, I, I was in the word letter.
When did it come out?
No, that's a different one.
Is it this one? Oh, oh, that's the one I missed. Okay, yeah, you did send it out. I missed it in the sandwich of the other two announcement letters. Um, okay, sorry, give me just a quick second to satisfy my not going to get screwed by the grant concern here.
So it might not actually cost $394,800?
Yeah, I mean, I know that they always go high. It's like, we get a $750,000 grant, put the water line underneath the rubber tracks and we lose, use just over 500.
Okay, before any work is permitted on the project, you must complete an email of the following items to your T I B engineer. Verify, number one, verify information on the attached project funding status form and revise if necessary. Hmm, what's that mean? So, number two, submit the selection of your adopted six-year transportation improvement plan listing this project. Uh, what's that mean? So, number two, submit the selection of your adopted six-year transportation improvement plan listing this project. Number three, sign an email, one copy of the fuel tax grant distriba- distribution agreement. And you may only incur reimbursable expenses after you receive approval from T I B. This project must advertise for bids no later than May first. Construction activities shall start no later than July first of the year of scheduled construction unless T I B provides an extension in writing. As long as they don't screw it up. Make it, put curves everywhere where we don't want them.
Right, well, that'll be, that'll be the scope. If you're asking where, where's the locations. I don't know about you, but I'd be okay with just taking a map and just.
Right, alright.
Okay, that's, that's the section I was thinking must be in here somewhere. Uh, section eleven, that, uh. At bid award and contract completion, recipient may request an increase in the maximum payable T I B funds for a specific project. Request, request must be made in writing and will be considered by T I B and awarded at the sole discretion of T I B. All increased requests must be pursuant to da, 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 wax and R C Ws. If an increase is denied, the recipient shall be liable for all costs incurred in excess of the maximum amount payable by T I B. So that doesn't make it a no from me, but I was not thinking they were actually writing a blank check and they're, they're not. Which is fine. We just need to know that we may be, we are signing up for something that, we will complete it. Or else they can go after us for the funds according to the termination and found non-compliance. And it could be an, an amount that we, we don't have a cap for. Now, generally, T I B has been, there are friendly people on the other side of the debate and it's not likely to happen, but just before we vote, I think it's worthy of note that. We are technically writing a blank check and hopefully and most likely that will be an amount of zero dollars and zero cents, but not necessarily.
It's, it's not the first time I've, I've heard of a public works project that. When the bids come in and they're opened, it's more than what the award is. And we have the option of just saying.
Or they lowball it and change orders on top of change orders and it costs you more than what the original.
Right, and that's, that's what I was.
Where all the bids come in and you decide, you know what, we're gonna drop five locations from the project and have a rebate.
You'd have to.
But can, but we don't have discretion to drop locations, do we? T I B.
According to that, we do.
This is not gonna get the entire city done, so.
No, but isn't T I B granting us for a specific number of?
Well, that's why I was asking for the scope. I wanna know what the area is where they expect a certain number.
Cause I don't.
The paperwork doesn't specify any quantity or number of locations.
No, it doesn't.
Okay, then I'm not, okay, I, I'm not. Because we don't know how many locations we're committing to, I don't know that I'm okay voting for that till I understand the scope of it. Uh, look, I'm not trying to be alarmist. It will probably be just fine. These things are generally made to work out just fine for the city, but.
Along those lines, I'd like to also interject that when we find out where, where they wanna put them. Is there anything that we need to take care of before they even put them in? Do we need water lines, meter, I mean, anything like that, any utilities? Tre- tre- anything, you know, it's.
Meters could be a thing. I wouldn't doubt that we have a water meter somewhere in a ramp.
Lift up ramp, adjust screw, put that down. Yeah, that would be my concern, one of them.
Like I said, we can hold off on this, do more research. I just, like I said, it was just agreeing that we accept the funds and we haven't, we're not obligated to spend any of it until we get to that next step.
Find out where they're gonna go, so I guess probably the town, can you withdraw a motion?
Yeah, you can. Yeah, the maker of it can.
A second?
Yeah, the maker of it can withdraw the motion.
I'll withdraw it. That's fine.
I, I don't think we should wait too long. I think we should, to your point about money drying up, I think we should try to get it done next, next meeting.
But we don't wanna overload, yeah, don't overload the mayor with all this stuff hanging in the balance too, but yes, I, I, good call.
I think we'll be able to, I mean, once we know the, the number of locations and where they're at, we do an inspection to see if there's anything weird. We should be able to wrap that up real quick.
I'll, obviously get this.
When I read that the first time, I pretty much read it as, we're giving you funds, do as many as you can.
And if that's, if that's what it is, I have no concerns.
The way it read to me was, here's some funds, go make, get as many of them ADA compliant as you can.
Yeah, in which case I'm good.
And if, if that was the case, that's the only reason I threw it out there that.
But on the east side, I don't know where, you take around the park, for example. Well, most, a lot of places, it's just flat. It's just bored. There's no curving up or anything. So are they gonna go dig in and change something, I wonder? I guess we'll find out. I'll just shut up. I'm asking you.
I don't know, but I can find out.
They're not gonna dig in, they're gonna raise the rest of the sidewalk.
Yeah, the only place I can think of that has a lot of, or some elevation differences, the, um, front of the school on first there. From heading high school doors north.
So, next item on the agenda. This, uh, has to do with, and I don't think you've seen, you may have seen this, but. We talked about it during the budget workshops. So we did get one point two million for a well replacement. It is not, it's mostly loan, eighty-five percent of it's a loan.
Yeah.
So the bottom line is to service that loan, that that interest rate for twenty years would add twenty dollars and thirty cents. A month to every household.
To water users or every house?
Just, yeah, water users. So, how do you guys wanna, want to handle this? And before we go too deep, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with having. Well, we'd have to have a bunch of public hearings because it's a rate increase, a rate change. But we could implement a little bit, but eventually when, when that's done, probably twenty twenty-six would be most likely when it's finished. We'd have to be ready to start servicing that. The. When this came out, the information I heard today wasn't out there. Our public works guys have been readying well number one, which is the one that's gonna get replaced. To switch over to it during, for the winter months like we normally do. There's enough water in the table now that they could do that, so they's. Turned it on today without having it come into the system so they could kind of purge what's out there through the bypass or whatever. And they said, the sounds that were coming out of the well from beneath it were not good. Quote unquote. And so I asked them, is, is it the motor? And they said, no, it's below the motor. Something below the motor has let go. And something's rattling around back underneath there and it doesn't sound good. I haven't heard it myself, but it sounds to me like maybe one of the carrier bearings or something that holds the, the rod, the shaft that goes down. May have failed. Of course, we'll not know what it is unless we pull it, which is a challenge in and of itself. Bottom line is it's not healthy. And we can go down there together and, and listen to it. But it goes to that fact that eventually, sooner than later, uh, we're gonna need to replace that somewhere, somehow.
Could I make a suggestion?
Absolutely.
Is, um, get ahold of, um. The mayor from Odessa, get their well guy up here to, they specialize in those turbine pumps.
Yeah, and I just heard about it, so, um, I, I will do that. Um, the contractor that did our well number three. I think is, uh, moving on from that business, so we're gonna be looking for a different, so Odessa, you said?
Yes, Bill Crossley. Is that the guy's name? I know you don't live there, your brother does. Yeah, you know the guy.
But I mean, isn't some of all this move, before we have the hydrology study?
Y- yes. But eventually, but eventually we're gonna find, we're gonna have to find a someplace that we can put, put a hole in there and get water out of it. Cause we can't redo that one down there.
Yeah, sure, but I'm saying. We, we can't get money to replace a well where we don't know where we're putting it. Cause where you put a well.
Well, apparently we can't because if, if we sign that, if, you know, we were authorized and we sign that paperwork, we'll get the one point two. Where we put it is up for grabs.
How soon for a public input on this?
So how much and for how long? I mean, we obviously have sometimes a great attendance or a line, but.
Does the city even have a piece of property large enough to put any well in?
We've got, of course, the ecology park, they're, they're still exploring, if that's even feasible, being in, in the scrutiny edge of a flood zone and. And the other restrictions there, the closeness to the road and tracks, this, the road, what's allowed. The only other property that I can think of just off the cuff and I've not explored all of them, but it's the one up there next to the cemetery. Which technically is not even in the city limits, but it is owned by the city.
Yeah, but it, I don't think it matters how the city limits.
Waste water plant is out of the city limits, so we own that too, so anyway.
When they talk about a hundred-foot clean zone?
That's almost a.
Is that include buried vaults?
I don't know. Haven't thought about that.
Yeah, I know. You and I have talked about the cemetery a lot of times and this is the first time that came into my head, but.
I think it would do, it would.
It would.
Cause that cemetery technically could expand to the north.
Yeah, the downside of that is gonna be the property around it where they spray chemicals in the wheat.
You, from up there, you're probably talking about. Two hundred feet down. I have a hard time believing the.
From, oh, at least.
Yeah, so I have a hard time to, like, next to the cemetery.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, so when you talk about a clean zone, they mean clean zone.
You got a highway.
Yeah, and whether they consider pesticides, you know, which are laid out in an agriculture format. I mean, they're specifically looking for. You know, oil tanks and, you know, all the obvious hazards.
Lot of chemical labels.
But I honestly, yeah, I honestly don't know what a clean zone is. I just know.
Fifty foot from wells. Washouts and stuff. You remember reading that? Just say yes. Do you read the labels? Okay, but that's not, I mean, this is, yeah.
Okay, but I, I mean, I'm all for the public input, but we got two problems. One, we can't hardly bribe anyone to do public input around here, so we. We can't, if we really care about public input, we need to do more than just say we're gonna have a public hearing, cause that probably won't do squat. Second of all, we're gonna have to have something to tell them, cause if they come into this public hearing and say, where are you gonna put the well? Well, we don't know. Where are you gonna, how much is it gonna cost? Well, we don't know. We're gonna have a hydrology study. What did that say? Oh, that's not been done yet. Like, we, we, what are, what are we asking for public input on at this point? Should we do it?
Study being done.
What is it, a G O?
When we have the money, which we don't have yet.
Oh, so we have to sign up for the full.
No, 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 different, different money, right? The hydrology was different.
Yeah, that's, uh, that money has been, they've got a thirty thousand dollar cap, which apparently we should be able to get. That study done within that.
Ballpark.
Ballpark, yeah.
Okay.
So when's the study being done?
Well, we won't even request it until we've been awarded the money, if we're awarded the money. It's highly likely we will, but that department of the state. Apparently the person left and it took them two, three months to refill it. They just filled it a couple weeks ago. So she's got a backlog of these other things that are in front of ours to approve and move forward, so she's pounding through them pretty quick.
I would defer this until we actually know whether or not we get the funding for the.
What is, geotech, is it geo-technical or hydrologi-?
Geo-hydrologist.
Geo-hydrologist, okay.
When do we need to say yes or no to?
We have months on this. Probably May.
So we don't have a lot of time to get this study done.
That, so if we get the funding, like, within the next month to do the survey.
And we need to get going on it when we do.
We will, because apparently that will have to be done by June thirtieth. So it will have to be done in the first six months.
Well, before that, if we're gonna get the results of this study and then have the ability to make any public input and decisions on it before we need to tell. The other group whether we're gonna take the one point two million dollars before May, right? We need to get this study done in our hands by the end of February? If that's even possible.
Yeah, again, we just have to see if we can get the funds first. It does bring up the question that if we're gonna do this. How should we be restructuring our water rates overall?
Rates, you said?
Yeah, just our, how we're doing it. The fu- the first five thousand gallons is an incredibly generous number. And on average, people are using twenty-five hundred to three thousand gallons a month per household.
Didn't you mention that, uh, there's a, a city around here, a town you quoted?
Odessa.
Odessa, how much was it? Twenty-five hundred or something?
It's eight hundred.
Eight hundred, oh.
Eight hundred, they're only given, their base rate is somewhere forty-something a month and that only gives them the first eight hundred gallons. And I can't remember what the rate is after that, but it's.
That explains why most of Odessa's front lawns don't look green.
Well, they really, they hang on you down there.
They're, they're in the middle of true water.
They have some well issues.
They've got some big issues. Yeah, they make us look like Easy Street.
We'll be piping water to them.
I'm pretty sure the five thousand limit is because that's the daily limit for a normal household well. You drill a well out in the countryside, that's what you're permitted to pull out of it on a daily basis.
Well, that, that's per month, but.
Or per month?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm sure that number probably got put in there how many decades ago?
Well, does Odessa or any other town that you know of have commercial rate and residential rate?
I didn't look that deeply.
Apartments versus this?
I just, I just read what they have on there.
What's that?
We definitely should. We, yeah.
And I'd say that's all fine and dandy. Um, but on another note, back burner, we gotta really be diligent on. Identifying our leaks and all the summer stuff. And I, I, I know you are, we are, but I mean, that's. I mean, it's just ridiculous what we've last, I don't know, twenty, thirty years, how much water's been wasted. And overtaxed the, the well itself needless, um, usage. So, but I, regardless, we're gonna have to get somebody in here to look at that too, you know, well one. That knows what they're doing. It sounds like they know what they're doing. And I don't mean that in a bad way. I mean, they specialize in those high volume turbine, turbine pumps. And maybe by some chance, I'm praying, hoping that they'll have a, or they might have a solution for us too.
Well, I will get. A, a well contractor that's respected in there.
And I, I can't remember. In fact, I think out in the pickup, I have the number of the guy, but I don't know the guy's name down there.
Where?
In Moses Lake.
I would also contact Reed and find out who they have work on their wells.
After the meeting, I'll go out and look and see if I have that number.
Okay. Okay, any more conversation on that?
No, I'm good. Budget?
Twenty twenty-five budget. I don't know if you got a chance to review it, but. It's time, it's, hasn't that changed since last Wednesday?
So nothing's changed in that budget document since last, since the budget workshop?
So you, you verified that we don't have to have a public hearing after the numbers are finalized?
Yeah, there was just, um, there was just, we're supposed to have the one public hearing. You know, if, if I read, if I read the calendar correctly, uh, for the the, the A W C posts a budget.
Yeah, I do.
If no public hearings are required, I would say.
Well, we did have the one.
Right, yeah, if no additional are required, then.
Now, I put it up, the actual, I wrote up the ordinance. And I think I, yeah, I sent that to you guys.
What is that, the budget?
It's the budget ordinance, you know, once, once it's approved, has to be, uh, sent to the state and sent to.
Do we have, Mr. Mayor, do we have a wage schedule in there?
No.
Cause before, before I'll vote for it, it has to have that, if we follow our policy. Just saying.
This is, this is just the bottom line on the budget numbers.
David, what, what policy are you referring to with having the wage?
Our, uh.
With the budget?
Our, uh. In our, in our, each year's budget that's adopted by ordinance has to have a salary, our salary schedule in it.
Yeah, where are you seeing that?
In our, um, policy handbook, thank you. Like, the mayor hires people, he hires cost of living adjustment, you know, and all that, and it's, you have to go by the adjustments reflected in the salary table published by the city annual budget. So we need a salary table.
So the budget within it has all the salaries listed.
Cause right now, we budget, it's supposed to, well, every other town, well, it's supposed to. Put it in the budget, what's authorized, if it's frozen, or if they put it in there, an increase.
Okay, I did build the three point two percent cost of living increase that we spoke about into the budget numbers. So here's an example in the library, and it has the salary written right on there. I'm just using that one because it's easy, it's a single channel, it's not like it's being spread out over over different accounts.
So when you budget like that, did you wanna see anybody else?
I'm, I'm looking at something else first.
Um. We ran into page twenty-two and page thirty-four. I think you already had thirty-four up ones.
So here's an example, uh, for the streets, here's a portion of of salaries that's being attributed towards streets.
Okay, I get you, um, but, um, I gotta dig in my, oops, sorry. Those examples, somebody, if you hire somebody, the mayor, in this case, hires, you're gonna want the salary, you're gonna wanna range.
Yeah, we've been talking about that.
And that's what.
I would love for you guys to.
A wage sheet, that's kind of.
Yeah, exactly, I would love to see that built. It doesn't necessarily need to be part of the budget for.
No, it should, that, the numbers you have in here should be reflected by that.
Well, that's what our policy book says.
So in here, the budget for salaries is broken up into individual sub pieces.
Yes.
The cumulative amount isn't broken down in any way that makes sense.
That's the way these government budgets are something.
I get that, but I think what David's asking for is that we take those individual numbers that are in this and break them down into something like that, so they're actually make sense.
Like that, like when you hire. That's the last official one we really had. See, I don't need. I'm getting too much paperwork here.
But I still would also suggest that the pay scale be adjusted for compensation by certs.
Well, within, that's where you have a range, and, and when I explained in our workshop, there's a range here, you know? And obviously, to your concerns, yeah, well, you can say a lot, not all, but there's, they have like six steps. They have, um, they have steps, but, uh, anyways, they, they move up in those, or can. And, and, oh, great, steps and grade, okay, Lincoln County, but it kinda takes care of that, but here's your range.
Oh, no, I get that.
But that's, and so you wouldn't hire somebody that just started at your very top, top deal, without certifications, without X, Y, and Z. They work up to that as they make those grades. Yes, they, you know, they deserve up to it, but that's, there's a sandbox.
Go ahead.
Point of reference, cause David's assertion was better than my memory. In subsection one of chapter four on compensation, each job title within the city is classified into one of the city's classifications for salary purposes based on job qualifications, level of responsibility, difficulty, working conditions, skill, hazard, and amount of supervision required for a specific job title. Each classification is designated a particular salary or salary range shown on the city's salary and wage schedule, which is approved annually in the city's budget by city council. So David's assertion is correct.
Okay.
Thanks for looking that up. My eyes are too tired.
Now, we.
I had forgotten that was.
Followed that.
No, I don't think we ever have, but it is, it is there.
So I would suggest a couple of council members get together and build it.
Yeah, we'll have to meet again to approve the budget, it's gonna be done by the end of the year.
These are the comparisons of the three other towns, where it was sprayed in the, in Wilbur.
So David, are you wanting to plan against spearheading this?
I can, yeah. I, I mentioned it in several workshops, but it's just a table that we slam in there and go. You wanna do it?
That's fine.
Okay.
David and I'll take care of it.
Okay.
If you can send me a breakdown of the salary components based on the individual sections, just the salary components.
Yeah, I'll try to, when we have to just pull them out and type them over.
Thanks for looking that up, Steve.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Yep. Also have all the time sheets to tab, to tabulate, maybe the hours per discipline also, if you asked for. Okay, so we can meet on the eighteenth? Yep.
You gonna be here?
I don't think I'll be here on the eighteenth.
Darn.
We got an open seat, so.
Yeah, just, you wanted to live in Harrington, didn't you? That's, that's another thing.
I might be playing shuffleboard.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And council, now that we have an official resignation, it's vacant, correct?
Yes.
Do we have a template to type up to send out?
Yes.
Advertise?
Yeah, and that'll go out as soon as I can get it in there.
It's going into?
Uh, probably go into the paper, it'll go on social media, it'll go in the.
Advertiser?
The advertiser, I'll see, I think we should put it everywhere.
Okay.
Um, but I was gonna ask for you guys, how long do you wanna put it in there? I would say more than a week, I would.
Until it's filled.
What's that?
Until it's filled. Well.
And so we have at least three letters of interest.
I think we need to have a deadline.
It's open until filled, but the advertisement can be only a certain deadline. Does that make sense? It will later, think about it.
Well, yeah, I just, do you guys have a target?
How long do we run the one for, after Chris Maritz?
I think twice.
Two weeks?
Yeah, I think so.
I'd say, being this time of year, I'd go at least a month.
I was gonna say, it's a tough time of year, Nate.
I think four weeks. And let my own.
Try to, try to address it at the latter part of January.
Do we, how do they charge us? You just buy a block of time, or could you just?
Buy the, buy the columnage?
I guess it doesn't make any difference. Let's just say each week, we'll just throw out, pay for one, and then, okay, we'll buy another week, and then we'll do it another week.
Are you sure we have to have a specific?
We're locked in.
Or is it?
You'd buy it for two weeks, and then if you didn't get any response on the second week, you would put in to buy for the next two weeks.
So you got two, you got, yeah, two weeks at a time.
Okay, what deadline do you wanna use to have letters of interest turned in? That's the point.
Golly, um.
When's the second council meeting in January?
The fifth, did you say?
The second council meeting?
Oh, second one.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
I would say the twenty-second.
Make the deadline be twenty-second or a couple of days before, so that you can get out to them and you guys can look at them.
To apply?
That Monday?
Close of business on the twenty-second?
Okay. Any other thoughts?
And then schedule some time into that council meeting for individual members to go and review.
Oh, yeah, well, there's the whole process. You didn't have to go through it, cause it was just you, but there's.
It were followed, we have a standard operating, we have a resolution.
Yeah.
That's what it was.
Yeah, you know, we have a chance to speak, we have a chance to ask questions, we have an executive session, so.
It feels a lot later than it is.
Time flies when you're having fun.
I guess, this whole day.
Okay, um.
Oh, crap.
Okay, let's go ahead and, uh, look at approving the November thirteenth minutes.
So moved.
I'll second it. I'll, I'll second it.
Okay.
Who made the motion?
Steven.
Okay, I didn't hear him.
Counsel, I'm.
First and second, any, any, any discussion?
I didn't see anything. Get back here.
I'm, oh, you're looking, sorry, I was.
You're good?
I'm fine, yeah.
I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I'm good, okay. Um, a motion on table to approve the minutes, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Uh, okay, uh, to review and approve the November payroll, next on the agenda.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Was this, uh, this reflected on the former clerk's final?
Yes.
Okay. Are all the Washington cares fund, is that their insurance? What is it?
Talking about the CARES Act.
Yeah, the CARES Fund.
That mandatory healthcare life insurance thing you gotta pay into for the state.
Okay, thanks.
That internal care thingy.
Yeah.
They got.
Another reason for the state to take more of your money.
Exactly. And if you leave, you can't take it with you, right?
Yeah, that thing that was on the ballot, to get revoked and.
Well, honestly, every initiative on there, a yes or a no, would have worked on all of them, cause it didn't matter what you voted, they shouldn't have been there in the first place.
Just for clarification.
Yeah.
It's a monthly paycheck?
Yes.
And I don't, maybe this is part of my addition to the agenda, but, um, here, I'll just throw it out there. Well, I'll wait till the agenda time, forget it, I mean, it. I'm, I'm good with questions, Mr. Mayor, so.
So we got a motion to approve the November payroll, um, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Privilege, you're ready?
Yeah, I'm not ready.
Okay.
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Aye, okay. You're good, you're good, go with that then, okay, full.
Okay, um.
What else do we have here?
Observe the check record for November thirteenth.
Now, that one I must have put. There's a check record, I know I had a couple of questions. This is a check record, I know I had a couple of questions. Motion to accept as a check.
Uh, this is.
Oh, this is just a discussion, right?
This is just an observe.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, now we can talk about it. Uh, well, where are they? Again, this one will fit into my additions to the agenda, so.
What was the addition?
Well, I just wanted to talk about the city, our building, the building here, but, uh, part of it was the reimbursement for travel, for the bank deposits, how we're doing that, and, um, again, the, the personal, the, um, reimbursement, personal reimbursements for items.
Okay.
This, I said habitual, I should say, the, the frequent, not habitual, frequent reimbursement.
Okay.
Yeah, I understand that there is some.
Was there anything on the check register?
Well. Oh boy, earlier I went through, um, it's just a mileage thing, but, but, did you want to talk about that now, or you want it later?
Well, let's, we'll get that when we get to those. We actually just went past additions to the agenda, because we hadn't, because that's what you, you'd said.
Yeah, it's, it's quite all right, because everything kinda, kinda fits into everything we're doing.
Okay. Ready to move on?
What's Lefolos?
Wait, do we, did I miss that we have a motion to consider the claims?
No, we're just observing the check.
Oh, that's what I thought, Lefolos. But I thought Lefolos was, well, okay.
Check register and a claim. Okay, never mind, never mind.
Okay, because when I heard Lefolos and Warwick, my ears perked up, because I have a question with claims about Lefolos and Warwick, not in the check register.
Well, everything was, everything on the headings was check register, check register, and that's why it gets, in big black letters, so I get confused here, so, I, I'm, I'm good, um.
Okay, now we've got the check register.
Move to approve, move to approve the claims, we'll put it in discussion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Steven.
Yeah, so about Lefolos and Warwick, why?
Okay.
Why the twenty-two fifty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. We have gotten a series of letters from the Internal Revenue Service.
Oh, yeah, that.
The context of it was that for most of a number of years, I'll, I'll have to look them up and give them to you, but a number of years, our nine forty-ones were not filed.
What's a nine forty-one?
Nine forty-one is our quarterly with, has to do with the withholding from, so our employees withholding for, for their income tax and their social security, and our matching amount.
That didn't get filed, okay.
The paperwork did not get filed. Now, some of it was probably lost during the whole COVID disaster, but overall, most of them were not done.
What year, year span, five years, four years? Or you had to be?
It was, it was twenty-twenty on forward until.
Okay, so the.
Yeah.
The lockdown stuff.
Uh, twenty-one and twenty-two.
Is this?
Payroll issues.
Does this reflect a penalty of some sort?
No, it's probably the fee to have Lefolos and Warwick go figure out and file that paperwork.
Exactly. Exactly, so, they had to go in and go through all of our records and recreate the nine forty-ones as they should have been filed back when, and I got them all signed, and they got all submitted, and we're good.
That fee is simply to correct that issue, correct?
It's to do the paperwork, basically, to do the researches paperwork, to get all that corrected. So as far as I know, we are one hundred percent current with the IRS now.
Yay.
Far as you know.
Um, the outcome, uh, I have not seen yet the outcome of the nine forty-ones being processed with the IRS, is their credit is, I think we overpaid, so so we might end up getting some money back. So it's predominantly when Jerry was doing the. Oh.
And the transition.
Okay, tax period, this is a IRS letter, tax period July thirtieth of twenty-twenty-one. We actually have a thirty-nine-hundred dollar credit. Uh, March thirty-first of twenty-twenty-one. And we have a fifty-five-hundred dollar credit.
Fifty-five-hundred?
So that implies that it was over, overpaid.
Way overpaid.
But I don't know if this is an accumulative number, because these are two, well, it's two quarters.
So what do they complain about?
That they didn't have the paperwork.
They didn't have the paperwork to go along with the check that was sent them.
I've never.
So. I don't know what that means, we'll have to wait until we get the rest of them, but this is the result of two of the nine forty-ones being filed.
But on twenty-one there, what's the date of the letter stamped there, is that current, like, November?
This was received on November twenty-third.
On November, okay.
This is probably the first two ones, because we got two on, two of them right away, and then about two weeks later, I guess, another ten, they hadn't been filed.
Another ten?
Another ten.
So that would, oh, it could be five months or ten months, birthday and twice?
It was pretty much just about every single month, hadn't been filed. They'd been paid.
Could be ten months.
So. So, that's your answer on that one?
Okay, well, thank you.
Additional hours you can spend.
Just to confirm, who's allowed to actually carry the funds for the city?
Uh, that was the resolution that we just passed on the thirteenth.
That was you?
It'd be me, Cassie, Deanne.
And the former employee?
She, she would no longer be able to.
Okay.
Okay, um, are you good?
And what is the minimum dollar amount for that to be transported? Is there a holding amount?
It's a, is it done twice a week?
The current resolution is, uh, once per week.
Okay, so.
It could be on a Monday, or Wednesday, or Friday?
Stay off in the safe.
Precedent has been set mostly for Thursdays unless a necessity to run to town. Makes it a different day, but typically, it is Thursdays.
Okay, clarification, not a biggie, but, did we rent a backhoe, or was it an excavator?
The, which?
Uh, claims.
Sunshine, or a sun?
Sunbelt, sunbelt. Uh, transaction one zero two six, December fourth, twenty-twenty-four.
Yes.
Sunbelts, was that for a backhoe, or an excavator?
That was a Minix.
Okay. Just going, words matter, so I mean.
Yeah.
That was for an excavator.
Yeah.
Because there's a difference.
Yes.
Not a biggie. How many credit cards? We have two credit cards, Wheatland Bank.
We were paying, we have to pay for both October and for November, so there's transactions for both of those ones.
Yeah, because of the timing of.
What do we actually pay with credit card? Do we pay any utility bills with credit cards? We don't? And?
So what they're paying, a dot, which just happened in my hand. Uh, supplies from Home Depot, supplies from Amazon.
Okay. Consumables and incidentals? Civil Washington, the DOT charged us for that project, twenty-eight fifty-eight?
Yeah, we, since, when we had to cut all the way across up at the North End. It proved to be cheaper and much quicker to, since it was the state's road, to have the state come and do it themselves.
Right.
So if it's done correctly, there are depths for you.
I'm jumping around here a little bit, here, just, is the driveway repair twenty-three thousand five twenty-two?
That was not just the driveway. The driveway was probably, according to the guy, was about eight thousand of that.
I was gonna say.
The rest of it is patching, and, well, it's, it's the hole down here in front of Memorial Hall that we had to do, and it's, it's all off, um.
Where they put in that sewer line?
Where we put in the sewer line all the way across, so that got done, the, the line all the way across in front of the church. So basically, it was, it didn't get all of them, but it patched up a number of the, the holes that we've had to cut in asphalt, um, up at the school, got done.
Right. I'll say it before, say it again, at Fourth Street, each year, the cracks and the, and the patch that is needed there, because of the elevators, the traffic, it's gonna go to heck in a hurry, or, or hurry.
That's, yeah.
But, yeah, it's more than that.
This was just getting a bunch of the holes, and it didn't get all of them, but it got a bunch of the holes that we had to put in the concrete, or the asphalt.
And again, insurance didn't.
Yeah, check with them, they denied it.
They denied everything about it.
Well, especially in the driveway, yeah.
Well, yeah.
Because it had been an ongoing problem, in their opinion, it was, it was trying to find a collective, ours, taking care of our equipment, taking care of our stuff.
Yeah, yeah. Hmm, excuse me. I guess that's good experience, then.
It's kind of great to really not have.
Yes, to file right away, I mean, to me, I think it's all poppycock, but I mean.
We needed to repair it right away.
Right, but there's unforeseen circumstances and stuff, and beds and stuff processes, that we couldn't just get on it, Johnny, on the spot and do, so, personal opinion, off mic, I'll tell more.
I thought the process was, you filed a claim, and you went through the process of actually figuring out what it's gonna cost to fix the problem.
Generally.
So that step was skipped until after?
We didn't, so we got the water line fixed, and then I found out, after it'd all been done, from the landowner, that the driveway was damaged. And so, I was trying to get it repaired, and then you guys wanted to see about getting a claim. So, I put in the claim, it got denied, and then we actually got it done afterwards.
We fixed something, and then there was, that's right, secondary, um, damages, unforeseen, quote, and that's what we filed on, and insurance said, sorry. Makes you all warm and fuzzy inside, doesn't it?
Okay, any other questions on the claims?
No, I'm good.
Good.
Um, last thing, before we approve the, the rent amount?
Um, spoke with them. So, the, well, I'm trying to read and reinterpret the original, I just finally found the original lease that was signed. The off-the-cuff consensus was that seven percent was if we renewed that first initial lease, because there was a renewal clause in there. The, the initial response was, we didn't renew that, we just started a new one. And we did change some of the language in it, so there's some.
Seven, where did you get seven percent?
That's what was signed.
That was a cap on it?
Yeah.
It was to be, it was.
Yeah, CPI, a cap of seven.
A CPI with a cap, original cap was five, it got changed to seven, fine, but there's no CPI that was even close to that.
Yeah, and, and I just addressed the fact that.
Right.
And I think what I'm hearing there is, the argument is, because we did not renew the first contract that we signed, just going forward, is that because we made substantial changes to it, therefore, it started as a new contract at a new amount.
But we didn't vote on that, though.
Yes, we did.
We did.
How did we, and not the language I say, baloney, because it states in, well, I'll just pull it up and read it.
No, which, which document are referring to, the original one?
The, um, I don't know, you tell, where are we gonna find that?
Well, I've got it on my desk.
Both contracts, the original that you signed and the new one?
I don't have the new one, I, I can pull it, I mean, we voted on it, so.
All of it, I think the one you sent me, heck, heck, I think I have it in here. That way, we're all looking at the same. You run into the stuff at your council?
Oh, yeah. It's a dumb. We just, uh, look at the check register at the beginning, and we all sign like a back sheet and everything like that.
And then everybody takes off?
What's that?
Then everybody takes off?
Oh, we had to do it at the beginning, so then, then you go through the entire meeting.
Good.
Okay, thanks. Chris, do you have a copy of it?
Only an hour and a half.
I wasn't involved, I'm not.
Well, you're a councilman, but, see if you're. Where does Sam Hill?
As long as we're abiding by whatever agreement's currently in place.
Oh, here's the current.
Okay, the rental. See, where are we at, rental, rental, rental? Right there. That says, I think, it's the same thing, very top paragraph. And it has a section B to it. This one here. Okay, tenant shall pay the landlord during the initial term rental of nine thousand six hundred per year, payable in installments of eight hundred dollars per month. Tenant is responsible for their own utilities, period. Each installment payment shall be due in advance on the first day of each calendar month during the lease term to landlord at such and such such box number.
That would be the original agreement, not the one for twenty-twenty-four, which has different numbers.
I looked at the original one, pointed out, there's different numbers. The rental. The rental for any renewal lease term, if created, as permitted under the lease, shall be an increase based on the Consumer Price Index for, for the prior year, but shall not exceed seven percent annually. So, everything on here matches with all the paperwork you had, and, and one was created, and we were paying eight hundred, how'd we go to nine hundred, that's more, that's, what is that percent? It was more than seven, it was more than the Consumer Price Index.
I think it's because they're saying that we didn't continue the existing lease, we ended one lease and signed a new one.
That's the argument I'm hearing.
I didn't see one, vote on one.
Yeah, we, we voted on the new one.
Where's it at?
It's right next to it, right there.
It's right next to you, right there.
When was this? I asked for a lease the other day, and this was not in there.
Uh, this was, this was in the file cabinet.
Is there a document notating the changes in the lease contract? Available?
A document, do you want it again?
Noting the changes in the contract?
No, hopefully so.
I might have a red one, well, no, maybe not.
I found a copy of the original one that was marked up.
Yeah, I might be thinking of the original that I have a red line for.
Yeah. But even the red line one that I found was not the one that ended up being signed.
Okay, this is the one when I asked you, um, that I got from the clerk, one of them.
Looks like that's.
About two weeks ago.
Looks like that's a copy of this one.
Yeah.
The 2023 one?
And, and it talks about the, and all that stuff. I don't, this one, I don't know where then this one was produced.
It was signed on May 1st.
Yeah, so we, we got it April of this year, or March, I can't remember.
Yeah, my red line is just from 2023, so that would be the first one, not the second.
And yet, this was in the file as well?
Yeah, it was in this same file.
How come I got two, there are two different conflicting ones from the city?
You got the original one.
I, I, I got this one, I got this from the office here.
Yeah, that's for 2023, and it got rewritten to this one in 2024. Have to look at the signature on the last page.
May I keep this one?
I can make you a copy.
Or, how many copies did you have out here?
I just, I just had the one.
It's not what I expected, but I'm satisfied with the argument, I guess.
It says the term in 2023, the landlord hereby leases the lease premises to the tenant, and tenant hereby leases the saying from landlord, for initial term beginning August 1st, 2023, ending July 31st, 2024. Section B, after expiration of initial lease term, lease will roll over automatically and renew every, every year unless notification is made, not less than 90 days prior to the renewal period.
And we, we didn't renew that lease, we changed it.
So I'm gonna have to go back on tapes and listen to all that. I kinda remember what we're doing, but I.
I can look at the agendas and find out which word it was on.
Yeah, I.
So you'll do it, you want a copy, David?
Sure. That document I've never seen. On my computer, I have all, all the ones would have been saved, so. Okay, move on.
Okay.
So we're in discussion?
In discussion for new claims.
Hi, that's good.
You're good.
I'm satisfied.
Okay, uh, there's no further discussion, we have first this, our motion to approve the new claims, all in favor, say aye.
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 Right, uh, mayor's comments. Already covered the well, the weeds, the guys have the book, uh, that they got from Wazoo. Um, I need to do a status check with them and see what they're doing, and then see if they feel like they need to get some one-on-one training, you know, go off, off-site and get some training, and we'll get them, my, my goal is to have them up to speed.
Thank you very much.
Uh, by, by spring, early spring.
Perfect.
Right, as soon as the.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Kathy.
So, that's the goal with that. As you guys all know, our city is getting a little, parts of it is getting a little tired, the latest is the kitchen in the Memorial Hall. Uh, the dishwasher is no longer functioning.
Is it kaput?
Well, we had, we had the repair people come out and take a look at it, and they flat out, they effectively said yes, because it's so old, there's no parts available for it.
And that's usually the way things are nowadays, you just might as well.
So I don't know how old it is, but it's, so it's, it's just not being used. I've been asking around to the people that use the kitchen in the Memorial Hall, and they do say it is an item that they do use regularly, primarily to sanitize the.
It's a health issue, too.
It's a health issue. Um, I've not done any shopping, but one of the Public Works employees did some quick, what if we bought the same one today that's, that brought up to the Kern Bowl? It was 5,100 bucks.
What? What, is it a commercial dishwasher?
That part, that one is, yeah.
Okay.
That doesn't surprise me.
Yeah. So.
It'll do a load of dishes in four minutes.
I don't think this one would.
I don't think it did that one, I don't think it did that, um, but.
Maybe we should get one.
That's what mine does, it'll do a load of dishes in four minutes, it's a sanitizing system, it's not a dishwasher.
So that's what I had been told by people that use there, they would prefer, because they're already starting to wash them and all the rest of it, it'd just, you know, get them rinsed off and everything, it'd just be nice to get it just.
So they don't just put in food stains and everything?
Put it in a tray, put side the tray in, hit the button, and three, four minutes later, it's done. Be careful, they're very hot when they come out of the.
My only concern with upgrading the system like that would be, the city would be on the hook for the chemicals associated with that.
Is there chemicals?
I believe we're already using some sort of sanitizer, I believe that there's a sanitizer bottle connected to that, the one that's there already.
Is it, is it more than just soap?
Yes, yeah, there's a, there's a cleaning agent, and there's a rinse agent that are both attached to the new ones.
So.
And then, for our hard water, you literally have. You literally have to put in vinegar on a regular basis to get rid of the hard water buildup.
Okay.
So I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying that that was the first blush of, and I've not, I've not priced them, I don't know what this different stuff, I mean.
To maintain health department requirements, you're probably gonna have to go with something that costs about that much.
It is a certified kitchen, so.
It's gonna have to require.
You're, you're cooking for seniors and others?
Yep. It's considered a certified kitchen from the health department, so it gets health inspections, it gets.
Where did you go for yours?
Uh.
Or was it in?
I'm pretty sure Jay got the one that's in the Harrington House from the restaurant supply place in Spokane.
So I was gonna take a look at that.
Yeah, they're anywhere between four and six grand.
And the one that's in there now?
Well, that, that's, yeah, that's just one thing.
Is it built in, or is it, I mean, is it carpentry issue?
Counter, I don't think it's a carpentry issue, I think it's, it looks to me like it's just like another normal one, it's just, it's a commercial grade.
Stand on your head and roll them in and out, that low to the ground?
Um, apparently some of the cabinets in there are getting pretty old and tired and rotted. So, I'm wondering if before we go down any path, we start looking at what.
Complete.
Things are out there to completely redo it.
A complete remodel?
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can start searching the rolls of grants, I mean, there's, there's pages and pages and lists and lists of myriads of organizations that are within the government that have grants for this and that, they're either thinking, be stunned, I just have to start looking for it. This is, this is all information that just developed today.
You can find a grant for it. But.
The other thing is, if we did manage to pull that off and get an upgrade, we could significantly change, uh, what we charge, maybe not to senior needles.
The usury of it.
But there are people out there that would like to have the access to a commercial kitchen, caterers and what have you, so.
They're probably looking at a 50 to 80,000 dollar remodel.
Don't keep going.
That's on the cheap side, if we do it.
Keep going, because if it's a professional grade, it's steel countertop, stainless steel countertops, it's.
Up to 200.
Plumbing, the wiring, all of it, it's. And in a space that large, with how much counter space there isn't there?
Yeah, you're probably right.
And it could be, you know, if we did that, it could be reorganized, too, I mean, it's, there's great counter space, but it's also broken up all over the place with the random sink here and random sink there, so.
I think when they first put that in, it wasn't intended to be that way, so, I get it.
Probably not, but it's, gets used that way, no, anyway, I just.
Let's go.
That was, uh, you know, that's on top of, you know, the various roofs in town, or, yeah, drips and drabs, and it's just all the same stuff.
What is going on with the, um, bank block roof?
They, summer, put down a coat of roofing material to get it sealed, and they, they did a bunch of changes and fixed some things and improved some things and re-screwed down some of the flashings and everything. And I think they made a huge difference, but then when it started to rain, because they're going up there every single day, and it's, there's drips that are coming down, there's just holes that they missed, you know, they didn't know they were there, but there's a hole, and so. My understanding is most of our, most of our five-gallon bucket, uh, inventory is up there, kitchen drips, and that's why they go up there every day is to.
Upstairs.
Yeah, yeah, so the kitchen is upstairs, so it doesn't come down, but at least we don't have water that's just massively pooling up there. Um, I got them some visqueen there, just waiting on some plywood, but they're gonna, when the weather is okay to do so, they're gonna go up there and try to put some visqueen and batten it down over the top of it, to even pretty, and those little drips from happening.
And the Memorial Hall roof, is it in need for a?
I don't know how bad that is, they, they mentioned it was leaking, but then I didn't, I haven't said anything more about it.
Have they considered just buying some cans of spray rubber and going up there and just?
That's effectively what, well, is this.
Flex seal, Chris.
Basically.
Yeah. Um, I've suggested it, and maybe that's what we have to do, but I don't know.
It does work.
Stick this time of year, but.
Oh, it'll stick this time of year.
Okay.
It works.
I did a chimney a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
And, and trust me, it'll stick.
Maybe I'll just get a couple cans from Home Depot.
Yeah, you can get the, the aerosol or the bucket with the brush, the bucket and brush.
I wouldn't do that, I'd actually get the spray cans, when you identify a spot, but don't get the same color as what the roof is.
Right, yeah.
That way, at least you know where, where there are, the patches are.
So anyway, that's all I got.
Play tic-tac-toe, yeah, there you go.
I, I know somebody who did that with the clear stuff, they sprayed it over the holes, and then when they went back up there, it was like, oh crap, where are all the holes? They were literally out there on their hands going, oh, there's one.
I don't know, the aerosol is expensive, it lasts, I had better luck with the, the can, you put it on as thick as you want, you do, you want, but you could have the sprayer, you couldn't even spray that. A five-gallon bucket, it's gonna be spenty, but you could spray that on with a air sprayer.
Spray that, not that great, that stuff's thick.
Well, they don't spray it.
Yeah, maybe the sprayer's ruined.
Yeah.
You're random.
And people say our YouTube isn't worth watching.
Sunbelt rentals, everybody, no, I just can't handle that.
Any other additional comments from, uh, public?
Well, they're, they're designed to do that stuff, you just change the tips and use the right, um, solvent to clean it up.
Okay, that's all I got, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn.
A second.
All right, thank you. A second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
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 We are adjourned at 9:20.